Hello, everyone.
Hi, Nate. Can everybody hear me?
I can.
Yes. Okay, thank you. I'm just waiting for us to go live to YouTube and then to get the okay from GE TV that we're live. And then we can begin.
Can I share my screen? President Kozinski, can you make me a co-host or? I don't know who needs to do that.
Let's see, I can. I can ask Bob O'Keefe hold on one second to do that.
I can see the superintendent.
Yep, he's going to share his screen so we can all see his presentation.
I see.
YouTube should be starting momentarily. Okay, we are live on GE TV. Mark, he said that he'll allow you, okay. Okay, YouTube will not connect, but we are live on GE TV and Bob's going to keep trying to connect to YouTube so we can go live there. And he will post this recording to YouTube as soon as possible after the meeting. If for some reason, we can't connect live during the meeting. Okay, so we are going to open the special city council meeting of the Gardner City Council today, Monday, August 24th, 2020. Thank you, everyone, for your patience and with our technical difficulties that we had here. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Boone.
Present.
Counselor Boudreaux.
Present.
Counselor Craig Cormier.
Present.
Counselor Ronald Cormier.
Present.
Counselor Don Lawitz.
Present.
Counselor Graves.
Present.
Counselor Harder.
Present.
Counselor Mack.
Present.
Counselor Tyros.
Present.
Counselor Walsh.
Present.
Resident Kozinski.
Present. The announcement of open meeting recordings pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020, order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Gardner City Council will be conducted via remote participation broadcast live on Gardner Educational TV Channel 8 and Gardner City Hall's YouTube channel, assuming that we can connect or it will be posted later. The audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings will be posted on the city's website as soon as possible after the meeting. And just as a reminder, since this meeting is being conducted via Zoom, there'll be a roll call vote on all motions, and if you would like to be recognized, please raise your hand in front of your screen and I'll recognize you by calling on you and then you may proceed. So the first item, item number 10309. In order authorizing the FY 2021 September continuing appropriation budget, is there a motion on the floor to approve? Motion made by Counselor Cormier?
Yes. Again.
Motion made by Counselor Cormier, seconded by Counselor Boudreaux to approve the order authorizing FY 2021 budgets, 2021 September continuing appropriation budget. Is there a discussion on the motion? If there is no discussion, the clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Boone. Counselor Boone.
Sorry, I was mute, yes.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Boudreaux?
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Ronald Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Don Lawitz?
Yes.
Counselor Graves?
Yes.
Counselor Harder?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Tyros?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Resident Kozinski?
Yes.
It's 11 yeas, zero nays.
The motion carries. Item number 10310. In order to raise and appropriate $12,388,666.66 for the various departments for the salary and labor budgets for fiscal year 2021. Is there a motion to refer to the committee of the whole? Counselor Walsh?
Yes, if the chair will entertain it, I'd like to suggest that items 10310, which is the one you've raised, as well as 10311, 12, 13, 14, 15, and 16 be taken as one and all referred to the council as a committee of the whole for study and report.
I would like to entertain that, is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Walsh, seconded by Counselor Ron Cormier to refer to the committee of the whole items number 10310, 10311, 10312, 10313, 10314, 10315, and 10316. Is there a discussion on the motion? Seeing there is no discussion, the clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Boone?
Yes.
Counselor Boudreaux?
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Ronald Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Don Lawitz?
Yes.
Counselor Graves?
Yes.
Counselor Harder?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Tyros?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Resident Kozinski?
Yes.
11 yeas, zero nays.
Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the special meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Walsh, seconded by Counselor Boudreaux to adjourn. The meeting stands adjourned.
We need a vote on that, don't we?
Oh, I'm sorry. Is there a discussion on the motion?
Discussion on a motion to adjourn.
The clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Boone?
Yes.
Counselor Boudreaux?
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Ronald Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Don Lawitz?
Yes.
Counselor Graves?
Yes.
Counselor Harder?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Tyros?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Resident Kozinski?
Yes, the meeting, the motion carries, the meeting is now stands adjourned. So we are at 6:16. The informal meeting that we have, it was supposed to begin at 6:10, so I'm going to go right into the meeting unless there's anyone who objects otherwise, I think we're good to go. Superintendent Pellegrino, are you able to share your screen, you did get the capability?
Absolutely, yeah.
Cool, okay, good. Okay, so I'm going to now open the informal meeting. And this informal meeting has been called for the purpose of Superintendent of Gardner Public Schools, Dr. Pellegrino, who has joined us, is here to make a presentation on the school department's budget. And after the presentation, I'll open it up to questions from the counselors for Superintendent Pellegrino. And you'll be able to ask your questions at that time. So Superintendent Pellegrino, go ahead.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you all for having me here to represent Gardner Public Schools, even during this crazy time of COVID-19 and all the different ways that education is going to look over the next few days, weeks, and months, and possibly years. So this is our FY 21 budget presentation. And as always, I like to talk about first and foremost, you know, the changing demographics in Gardner. We are a very different city than we were just about 15 years ago, as you can see from this slide that I keep updating each year, where we have a high-needs group at the very top, and our high-needs groups are our students who are learning to speak English, our students with special needs, and our students from low-income families. And as you can see, it's gone from approximately 54% up to 62%. And that's actually somewhat of a gradual incline, believe it or not. At early on, things changed from low income to economically disadvantaged. And it was interesting when they did that because so many people in our city didn't meet the same criteria that they used to. So the state essentially lowered our percentage by raising the bar of being considered low income. So our community, as you can see, is becoming more and more diverse, which means that we want to make sure that we're meeting all of our students' needs. And so when we look at students with high needs, they have challenges, they have struggles that we at Gardner Public Schools do all we can to make sure we're meeting those challenges. One of the things I've said since I became superintendent is students leaving our district equals higher expenses. And the first way that students leave our district is by out-of-district placements. Out-of-district placements are when we cannot provide support for students with special needs within our district. And so in order to have those needs met, they have to go outside the districts. And unfortunately, this costs the district millions of dollars, but more importantly, it's our students not being serviced with their peers in our community, which is really one of our major goals, to make sure we're doing all we can to meet our students' needs within our district. Yeah.
Not to interrupt, the slides aren't changing for us, I don't think. We're still on the title slide.
You're still on the title slide?
Yeah, I wasn't sure if you had started to go through the slides yet, if you were introducing. So it looks like it's frozen on our end.
Let's see if I'm going to stop share for a second. I don't know if I can do this. Can everyone see that slide right there?
I don't see the slide at all.
Okay.
Yeah, no, the screen's not shared anymore.
Technology.
Here we go.
All right, and I'll just minimize.
Your mouse is moving now, or it's kind of frozen before, so hopefully we're.
Okay, so you can see, everybody can see this?
Yes.
First slide.
Okay, all right, so very good, so. And everybody's now changed slides, you can see changing out demographics?
Yes.
Excellent, all right, my apologies. So this slide is the one that just talks about the changing demographics in Gardner. The next slide is about our out-of-district placement costs. As you can see, we went down for a couple of years between FY 15 and FY 17. We started creeping up, and now we're starting to level off. We've done a lot to improve our infrastructure in those few years in terms of putting more and more services, especially for students with special needs within our district. The better we can serve our students in our own district with their peers in their community, the better off the students are, but also it also impacts our bottom line positively as well.
Can you turn it up full screen, Mark?
When I do that, that's where it did this. And, you know, I can try to.
That's all right.
I'll try real quick, let me see if I can. If I okay, keep these changes. Okay, can you see that now?
Yes.
Everybody can see.
Yes, but it has kind of like a side slide with it, too.
The next one says next slide.
Yeah.
It got frozen again. You are all having.
Thanks, Jim.
Oops.
Just give me one second. And let's see.
Now I messed it up.
No, it's okay, it's all good. All right, when in doubt, go to PDF, can everybody see that now?
Yes.
All right, and your slides are moving right along, yes?
Yep, and it's pretty much full screen, so.
Okay, the best unfortunately I can do under these circumstances, my apologies. So if everybody can read that, that's great. So as you can see, these are our enrollment trends for school choice out is in red, and school choice in is in blue. This is one of the things that I've focused a great deal on. You know, at Gardner Public Schools, we're really trying to improve our services. So again, students stay in our district rather than school choicing to other districts. Our focus really hasn't been on increasing the number in as much as it is on reducing the number out. But as you can see, over the last few years, we've actually started to take a downward trend in terms of the students leaving our district and increase the number of students coming into the district. A lot of this has to do with Gateway to College, which was definitely a positive shift for both of these populations in terms of increasing students coming into the district and reducing the number of students leaving the district. In terms of money, this again has, you know, a positive influx of funds into the district and a slower or I should say, less dollars leaving our district. Any questions on any of that? Okay, so our focus is on excellence and equity always. And so when you think about excellence and equity, we're really trying to do a couple of things. First off, we want excellent programs at every level, and we're trying to keep our high flyers in our district. We improve our AP Academy, our early college programs are moving forward along with career pathways, making sure we're giving kids what they need so when they graduate, they can either move on to college or careers. We've increased the rigor of every course. We've increased our level of not only assessment, but formative assessments in the schools, which inform instruction, so we assess where kids are and then use that information to inform how we help them to progress. And there's also been more investments in the arts, sports, and our STEM programs. We also keep our struggling students in our district by continuing to develop our Gardner Academy and Mount Utesi College partnership with Gateway to College and Pathways. Not to mention, our early college program has just taken off phenomenally well. We have an increase in student supports in the classroom, this is a major focus of as we're increasing, as we get funding from both the city and our state governments, we're putting that money towards getting more supports in the classroom to support our students who are struggling in the classroom. We're also using more data to inform our instructional programs, and we've moved to improve our tiered supports, which really means that we, again, assess and then we design responses to make sure that all students are receiving what they need to improve. So our budget should be driven by our goals and by how we design our education. So just a couple of quick definitions, so we're all on the same page. First off, when you look at additions in this presentation, the additions mean these were positions that were required to be in this year's budget. It could be a one-to-one paraprofessional, it could be an additional special education teacher to our special ed needs as defined in students' IEPs. It could be for a number of reasons that we had to actually add a position for this year. Reductions are typically savings from retirements. Our level services budget is keeping our services level, although our cost goes up when our services are level. Expected funding is what we anticipate, the total funding from the city and state, and then of course, the funding gap is the difference between the budget and the expected funding. And I don't know why it says expected funding. The budget adjustment process, so I do want to go over this because I think it's really important, and Gardner does this, I think, very well, I have a great team of administrators, and not every district does this. So we pulled together our principals and our directors from every school in the district. And we asked them to submit a level funded expense budget. But what we do is, we also ask them to say, well, what is it that you need to actually improve your program, and again, to support the needs of our students or make your programs more excellent or more equitable? So when they list those prioritized needs, and then they submit lists of the expense reductions, and the expense reductions typically total about $1.2 million. And I ask each principal and the directors to cut a certain amount that totals up to $1.2 million. And the reason we do that is because it's important that as we look at our budget each year, we're just not going along with what we have because this is what we know. We want to reduce our budget, and then we actually start to put each position and expense back into the budget, starting with the most important. So sometimes what winds up happening is additional staff to improve the programs wind up more important than some of the other resources we already have. So this makes us think about, it's similar to zero-based budgeting, it's not quite zero-based budgeting, but it's a way for us to look at our programs and make sure we're always using every penny to its best effect. And so then we meet for over 20 hours typically in the conference room that I'm sitting in right now, and we hash it out. And some of the discussions are very heated, but we're all on the same team in terms of trying to make Gardner best. And oftentimes, you'll find that a principal at the high school, Principal Bulger may say, you know what? You need an extra person down at Elm Street School, so I'm going to give up this position or this program in order for you to have that. So we all decide on what's the most important expenses and programs for the entire district, and that's how we develop our budget. So just some budget restorations and adjustments. These were some things that we needed to do for Gardner Academy, we, you know, we have a regular substitute of $5,000. Basically, we took their sub-line away at some point, and so we're putting that back in. We're also, we needed to hire an adjustment counselor, an administrative assistant, a one-to-one paraprofessional, a classroom tutor, an RBT, which is a registered behavioral technician, who typically works in one of our substantially separate rooms for students with special needs. Also, we had to take over a half of a salary for a grade-two teacher and a half of a salary for a grade-one teacher because our Title II-A, and this oftentimes happens, they changed the requirements, so we were not able to pay for those positions out of the Title II-A. So we had to encumber that under our budget. And the summer work crew that we were planning on having this year to help us with the the lawns and just helping us, you know, keep our our facilities in our lawns mowed and ready to go, that money went to, I can tell you, into HVAC systems as we are going through each one of our HVAC unit events, which I'd be happy to talk to you about afterwards if you know you have any questions on HVAC. I've learned a lot in the last few weeks. Our budget reductions, we had several retirements to the tune of about $50,000 to reduce our budget for next year. And so this is what we're expecting, to be able to reduce the budget as we hire new staff. Our salaries, as you can see here, regular education, so we do have contracts. Salaries went up for our Unit A teachers and associated personnel by 2%. Now, if you notice, the regular education instruction only went up by $9,742, but our special education instruction went up by $293,435 or 6.4%. The reason for that difference is because typically, when someone retires or somebody moves on to a different district, somebody leaves our district for whatever reason, we look at each one of those positions, and again, we say, what is the most important position? And oftentimes, some of the regular education instruction is switched over, and those monies are then used to to hire special education staff to support our students' special needs. So that's why that number went up so much, and the regular education instruction didn't go up nearly as much. So and then, as you can see, all the other ones went up, you know, pretty reasonable amounts between 1.1 and 1.8%. Any questions so far?
Yes, I have one, special education instruction, you needed more staff to cover your needs for the coming year, is that why the difference in that budget is so much higher?
Yes, so what happens, as I said, so when people are leaving us from regular education, we look at each one of those positions, and we found that special education instruction was more important. So what happens is that money, instead of paying for regular education instruction, we're paying for a special ed instructor, so it shifts it over, yes.
Does that mean that there's been a reduction in staff for regular education?
Yes and no. Oftentimes, when we have a special ed instructional staff, they support all students. So it doesn't necessarily mean that we dropped a teacher who only serves regular education for a special education instructor. For example, if we hired a kindergarten teacher, they need to be specially ed certified to be a kindergarten teacher. So that's one of the things that may shift that as well.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions? Excuse me. So as you can see, so these are our expenses and where our expenses went up or stayed about the same or went down. You know, a couple of things that I want to mention, the Title II-A grant, again, changed its needs. And so you'll see, you know, a 94% encumbrance for central administration. That was due to, again, title funds that were no longer eligible for the services that we were using them for. Same thing with the regular education instruction, so it went up significantly, but it was necessary in order to keep. So it went up significantly, but it was necessary in order to keep that instruction going without without the funds from grants. Transportation took a significant decrease because the after we negotiated with NRT Busing Company, they were able to, they're going to be able to do our bus routes with only nine buses. So by doing that, we saved almost $100,000 in transportation. Any questions on any of this? I do like to go over Circuit Breaker because it is so confusing, and I've had so many people ask me questions around this. Circuit Breaker is money that we receive from the state, which covers a percentage of costs that are when we when we have to pay over four times the average amount for a student with special needs typically going to an out-of-district placement. And so when that happens, the state reimburses us some money. Each year, and as you can see, we've tried to color-code it here to show how we use these funds. So in FY19, our revenue from from the Circuit Breaker was $318,246. And what we do is we just move that over into FY20 because you're able to carry it over into the next year. That helps to defray the cost of out-of-district placements. As you can see, they're up top, the out-of-district that was funded by the general budget and where we were expecting to be funded by the general budget in FY21 is $1.7 million. So it helps us, most definitely. All the money is used to defray this particular cost each year. Any questions on this? I know this is a sometimes a hot topic.
Yeah, Mark, how did we go from $180,016 to $465,019?
In FY16, $180,000 in contracted services?
Yes.
Because so the basically the need we've had, we've just, this is, and this is the problem. We had an increase in students who needed services that were outside the district. And so that increases that cost. As you can see, it's been going up, and this is pretty regular for most districts. And my focus has been trying to put the infrastructure in because you don't typically lose students overnight. What happens is, as they have, as they go for a time without progressing significantly, then parents say, you know what? The district's not able to support our needs, and so we need to go to an out-of-district placement. So we've really been trying to put the infrastructure in so that doesn't happen as often. By the same token, I will tell you, this is also, how can I put this, other than saying that when when people move into the district? If, for example, and you know, and I think it was in actually FY18, we had, you know, someone come to us from Lowell and, excuse me, Springfield. They came into the district, the parent moved into the district. There were two students on out-of-district placements in Springfield. We are considered the local education agency. We took over those payments because the because the parent moved to Gardner. And there is no negotiating. I can't say, well, you know, we want to bring the students to our district. Once they're out of district placement, even from another district, if they move into our district, we take over those payments, and we are the fiscal agent at that point.
I understand. Thank you. It's ridiculous.
So as you can see, we we earned, we got this year from the state about $401,542, and we're putting that into next year's budget to, again, defray the cost of out-of-district placements. Okay? Any other questions on this one? So costs that don't apply to net school spending, again, as I said, regular transportation went down significantly. McKinney-Vento Transportation is actually transportation for homeless students, and this is obviously a very important line item. And it's in terms of, in terms of, as you can see, it went down from $185,000 to $90,000. The only reason it really did that was because we are now required, according to the accountants, to have a foster care transportation line item account, which is what was, so it it used to be that McKinney-Vento paid both foster care and homeless transportation, and those numbers for foster care have been going up greatly. So if we have someone in the in the district, for example, whose child goes into foster care and they move to a different town, it is our, it is our, we are required to transport that student to Gardner Public Schools. So our homeless transportation actually went went down. We're expecting it to go down for next year, but our foster care transportation actually makes this overall category go up. Our special education transportation went up about $30,000, and then the others, for the most part, stayed the same for crossing guards, crossing crossing guard expenses and bus models. Any questions on that? So our revenue projection, we had no idea what was going to happen, you know, in the past few months. I was pleased when the state actually said they will they will not reduce the funding lower than what it was last year for every city and town in the state. You know, I was actually really concerned that it would drop much more significantly than this. I was expecting another, you know, $500,000 or $600,000 to be cut. There were some districts that were preparing for a 20% cut. You know, luckily, you know, we have some, you know, solid state legislators who are keeping us informed as to how the wind is blowing, so we never, we knew that that wasn't going to happen, but I did think it might be cut much more significantly than that. The required city funding for required minimum net school spending went up by about 500, by exactly $526,982, increasing the minimum contribution from 9, 900, 9 million, 9.4 million to 9.9 million, thereabouts. The city continues to fund us over minimum net school spending. As you remember, you know, and I've done these presentations before, in terms of the funding for schools and the reason for the Student Opportunities Act is because they found that Gardner Public Schools was underfunded by about $4 million over the last, you know, couple decades, quite frankly. And right now, in today's dollars, we're on, we've been underfunded by about $4 million. So they know they have to increase the amount that's coming into cities like ours. So we're, you know, very pleased that they've identified that, and I'm pleased that the city has really supported the funding of schools, and the state has been increasing the funding, obviously, this year was a different year. We were supposed to get more. The governor's budget was, you know, had increased, but with COVID-19 and the craziness of all the revenue for the state and for the city, I'm pleased where we landed, quite frankly, because I was thinking it would be a lot worse. So right now, the city funded us over minimum net school spending by $762,039. And the only reason that says it decreases is because the minimum went up by about $500,000, by a little over $500,000. So the total revenue that's projected is $31,692,824. So it's about $218,000 above what we had last year, which, yeah. Any questions?
Mark, is there anything that's going to come in from the feds? There was some talk about funding for education.
Yep, I can actually, yeah. So I'll talk about that when I, so we got some, there's there's a couple of grants that are coming out, the that came out, the ESER grants, elementary and secondary school recovery grants, and then there's the the COVID Relief Act. And both of those, one brought in over about $720,000 to the district, and the other brought in about $500,000 to the district or $550,000 to the district. The reason I'm excited about those is because they actually, you know, deferred those districts that need it. A lot of that covered, you know, first off, our gap, which I'll show you in a minute. So that's going to help defray the the cost of the gap, but also, we need to prepare for one-on-one instruction. So a lot of it was for technology. We just spent $350,000 on personal PPE, which is, you know, my new phrase, and $350,000 on everything from, you know, face masks to gowns to hand sanitizer. All of that came through from grant funding. So we've also purchased enough devices to be one-to-one going into next year, which is, you know, again, one of the ways that we could use that money. And I'm really excited, quite frankly, I'm really excited that that'll happen. Unfortunately, the supply chain is screwed up, so we won't be getting all of those devices until November. We'll be able to kind of squeak through for those couple of months, but then, once we get those devices, I think we'll have a very robust technology program. And I have to say, Bob O'Keefe, you know, has been spearheading that, you know, from the start, and he's been, you know, planning, planning for these steps even before COVID. So when COVID came, it just made us move a little faster, and luckily, we got some funds to allow it to happen.
Thank you.
So balancing the budget, you know, $31.6 million is our total funding. Our total budget is $25 million, $25.3 million. We do have the cost of $1.6 million that don't apply to net school spending, which I went over a few minutes ago. The city indirect costs, which include things like school choice, that's $8.4 million. And so it's a total net school spending expense of $32.1 million for a budget gap of $501,859. Any questions on that? So that's really what the bottom line is for, you know, at this point in time. You know, I do want to say, you know, again, you know, it wasn't until FY17 when we started, when the city started funding schools above minimum net school spending. You know, it's been, you know, it's been going up, and I know the city's been doing all all it can to improve. Again, you know, this money is not being wasted by any means. It goes right to making sure that we're providing equity and excellence in every way we can. And so I have to say, the state legislator, you know, legislature providing over one, you know, basically $1.2 million in grant funds to Gardner to help defray the COVID-19 costs was, has been phenomenal. Being guaranteed last year's Chapter 70 funding is excellent, and then again, the city coming in at $762,000 of the minimum required is just wonderful. And so I just want to mention the Student Opportunity Act. So back in March, early March, which seems like forever ago, we had a group of over 50 stakeholders get together and say, how do we make sure that we're meeting the needs of all of our students? We looked at our high-needs populations, and they, parents, teachers, retired teachers, paraprofessionals, people who just care about the districts, came to this meeting, and we focused a great deal on what we need to do as we move forward. And it informed our strategies in terms of literacy, early college, high-quality aligned curriculum, increasing personnel to support holistic needs, which essentially means social emotional learning in the in the classrooms and in the schools. And then ultimately, really, one of the big ones that I'm really focused on is increasing staffing to expand access to the arts, athletics, and enrichment, and strategic scheduling to allow common planned time for teachers. So those are some of the things, those last two, six and 12, are what we've been focusing a great deal on, to make sure that we're supporting our students in the classrooms they get what they need. And these are our positions in terms of priority order, and all that was informed by our stakeholders. So I'm really proud of the proud of the input that they gave. It was very thoughtful and helpful to us as we plan for our future. And so with that, that's the direction of Gardner Public Schools and where we landed for the budget at this point. Do I have any questions?
Madam President? If, Mark, have we had to lay off any of the teachers or staff or?
That's a, that's a great, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop sharing right now, but um, so I'm excited to say we have not had to lay off any any teachers or any staff, frankly. And a lot of that was through strategy. You know, last year, we stopped anything that we could stop our spending on while we were in COVID-19 and we were doing remote learning. We did. We were very fortunate, Mount Watch U.S. Community College, we were going to pay out of our school choice funds, we were going to pay for early college, which would have been about $200,000. They came through with grants that covered the entire cost, and that was a surprise at the very end of the year. I was thrilled to have that surprise. We also had our first real uptick, which we weren't expecting, in the increase in income from school choice in and the decrease in school choice out. So my job was to make sure that we had encumbered the funds in school choice. So if we did have a big cut, I was expecting another $500,000 to $600,000 to be cut. If we did have that, I would be prepared to keep all of our staff on board. I will say, you know, if you've seen the papers or seen people talking about paraprofessionals or RBTs, my registered behavioral technicians, who are, quite frankly, they're the glue that makes sure that the schools run. Without them, the schools would not run. I'm very candid about that. One of the downsides is, though, they're considered hourly employees, and according to the state, I can't pay hourly employees for time that they're actually not physically working. And so right now, you know, we're, you know, we're planning on going into remote learning. I'm still, you know, in negotiation with the with the union. We're still finalizing our plans, but ultimately, if I have no students in the building and no teachers in the building, I I I can only have so much work for some of the paraprofessionals and RBTs. So I just want to make that known to everyone. I'm not looking to to cut staff because they're they're badly needed, but ultimately, the important thing is that their their sole purpose for being hired is to support our most vulnerable students. So typically, our students in are substantially separate rooms. They support inclusion in the classrooms. These are the services that I've actually been trying to increase because, again, it reduces students needing to go outside the district. So unfortunately enough, we haven't had to cut any staff. Depending on what the model looks like, I'm, I may have to reduce some staff hours of some of our non-professional staff. And I don't mean that they're not professionals. I mean that they don't have a professional license. They're wonderful staff, and they work really hard, and they're very professional, but they're hourly employees, unfortunately, so.
Thank you.
And it's, yep.
Are there any other questions for Dr. Pellegrino? No questions? Thank you, Superintendent. We appreciate your presentation and answering all of our questions.
No problem. Thank you.
Okay, seeing that there are, there's no questions and the presentation has ended, I am going to now close the informal meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
You have a question with the charity? When do you think on having a meeting for final passage of the budget? Is that before our next regular meeting or before or waiting for that?
It will, it will be before our next regular meeting, yes. And you should, we should have information. I'm going to talk to Mr. the clerk tomorrow about different dates, but it will definitely be before our next regular meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.